August twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three. Please rise for the pledge. Number three on the agenda is an invitation for a citizen to schedule a time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. There's a five-minute time limit per person. Anyone wanting to speak during the agenda item must sign in prior to the start of the meeting. A commission action, no commission action will be taken during the agenda item. Any requested action item may be scheduled for a future meeting date. We have two names on the list today. First, Jeanette Gibbons.
Good morning.
Morning.
And last night I had the privilege of attending the candlelight vigil for Kyla Redbear. My friend Peggy invited me to come along. She's a personal friend of the family. And we're all a personal friend of that family right now. That's an event that should never have happened in Brookings County and should never happen anywhere. Kyla now is one of the unfortunate statistics of the missing and murdered indigenous women. And that does tie in with the topic we've been talking about with the movie Sound of Freedom. The trafficking, the crimes against people, especially targeted at these vulnerable populations. But why do we have vulnerable populations in our community either? Why aren't we all pulling together? And there were so many beautiful words that were spoken last night and feelings, heartfelt feelings that were shared among everyone that attended, reaching out to that family. And some of the words that I heard our Native American brothers and sisters speak to me and speak to all of us. We are all one. We come from one source creator. We're connected. And they even were so bold, the speaker was so bold to say, I love you, to all of us. And then they also reached out and said, if you need help, if you need help, any of you, the people here in Brookings, the Native American population, don't even know about their support that they have in Flandrew. But they weren't just reaching out to the Native Americans. They were reaching out to all of us. If you need help, we're here to help. And that, I believe, is a great message for all of us to carry forward from this. Out of something so dark can come something very meaningful and something that'll make a difference going forward. So I really truly believe that love is our answer. There's so much noise, so much nonsense in our world right now. But when I peel away the layers, the power, the money, the material things, don't really count diddly squat. And it comes down with to what I feel for each other. Feel for my family, feel for my community, feel for the children in our schools, feel to our Native American brothers and sisters. They're no different than us. Anything that divides us is false. Anything, anything that divides us is false. We are all connected. We are all one. And I'll repeat my message that I had before. I love you Jenna. I love you Kelly. I love you Mike. I love you Larry. I love you Sean. I love you Ryan. I love you Stacy. I love you Dan. And that can stop on the audience here tonight. I love you Brian. I love you Martin. I love you Lori. I love you Robert. And any audience that doesn't mean, I love you too. I do love you. I love you Bernadette. Thank you.
Okay, next up is Lori Schultz.
Good morning. So on behalf of the Sioux River Republican Women, I want to just remind the community of the property rights and CO2 pipeline debate happening tonight at the Dakota Bank Event Center, which was formerly the Swift Health Center. Doors are gonna open at five-thirty, seating for the first five hundred people. This is a no-mike event. It will be a moderator and then someone on both sides. So just to remind everybody, that is happening this evening.
All right. Next on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Discussion, changes?
We do have to add onto the exec session personnel, so SDCL one-twenty-five-two-one for personnel.
All right. Any other changes? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Consent agenda item, which include the minutes, travel and education requests, personnel action notices, cellular authorization, human services report. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion, comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right. Number six, routine business. Letter A, approval of claims. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second. Second. Discussion on the claims. Comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter B, department head reports. We'll start with Brian.
Morning.
Morning.
We kinda moving along with our asphalt project. Sounds like they're gonna start the bottom lift on the bridge today and start the leveling lift on County Road thirty-eight tomorrow. Just construction update here on Thirty-Fourth Avenue. Work continues north of Eighth Street. Kinda the same thing down there on Main Avenue South. Works continuing down there. They're working as they can. Lastly, here, the Bruce Shop replacement, there's kinda some numbers you guys can take into consideration for the recommended low bid with the insurance and FEMA. We should have that covered by well. And lastly, the train accident over there by Elkton, we had that closed down Friday night, and that will be a continuation until they get some of that debris cleaned up. We're in contact with the railroad on that, and we'll keep everybody informed when that's gonna open back up. But there would need to be some asphalt work approaching the train tracks, and we're gonna work with the railroad to coordinate that. So just a little update on that. But the road was, the approach to the rail was damaged, so we do need to do some work there before that road will be opened up. They gotta get the crossbucks that were installed last year repaired also. So that's a little update on that.
All right. Thank you. Sheriff?
Morning.
Morning.
Present time, we have forty-six inmates in jail, seventeen inmates from other counties. Twenty-four-seven is down, some participants. I think it was one forty-six has been in the in the forties, or one forty-six, forty-seven, or one thirty-one. So I don't know. I look at it, a good sign. They're coming off and, and the less we have on there, the means that hopefully that we have individuals that are getting a handle on their drinking. So anyway, just sort of a little reference to, you know, I wanna thank the highway shop, or highway for coming out and putting up the barricades right away. That was, that was a help for that. The highway patrol took the accident, which is good because it was on a state highway, so they, they took it. And we had to provide security from Friday night till Sunday at noon. They cut us loose. And with the Harvest Festival, you know, they had, so there was lots of people in Elkton, and lots of people were interfering with the workers actually, trying to, and we're just trying to keep everybody safe. So they, we had to, we had to provide security to keep people back from getting on the railroad tracks and taking pictures. And there's just a lot of, lot of people in town because of the festival. So but in a way, they cut us loose about noon on Sunday. Anyway, and then I have three deputies that are at training. They left Sunday to go to Pierce. So I have three at the academy. They'll be there for thirteen weeks. And then I'm one deputy down, so I'm kinda four deputy down right now. So my staff is doing a, doing a good job. They're a lot of twelve-hour shifts. So had to do some twelve-hour shifts over the weekend to cover for, for, you know, the train security and so forth. So yeah, it's, it's been kind of a tough month on, on my staff for August, but everybody's, you know, stepped up and doing good. So if there's any questions?
Questions, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lori? Okay, thank you. Bob?
Good morning. The, we had a tri-state meeting, which is the National Weather Service has approximately fifty-five counties. And we had a, they called a tri-state meeting. Iowa, Minnesota, South Dakota, and we got a part of Nebraska attended the meeting on August the sixteenth. They're calling for El Nino, which is gonna put us back into a weather pattern approximately nineteen ninety-six, nineteen ninety-seven timeframe. If you know anything about that winter, or remember that winter, I was in South Korea. But my wife was back here, and every time I called home, she kept crying about getting stuck on snowbanks. So just be aware, if that does come out to be, be a nineteen ninety-six and ninety-seven winter, we're in, in for, in for a ride. We had an I-PAS test conducted on August the sixteenth. Had a local emergency planning committee meeting over at Valero. Well-attended. Obviously, I was caught out to the train accident. Anytime they call me out to an accident such as the railroad accident, the main thing is to report on hazardous materials. And that particular train consists, did not have, had soybean oil, which is not considered a hazardous material, and some dry fertilizer. But it had the opportunity to be a serious wreck, but it had one tank car, but it was empty, being hauled, hauled out empty. So it was not a hazardous materials type, type response, thank goodness. And I went out Saturday again to make sure things were being done all right. Heat advisories have been issued. Excessive heat warning is issued obviously until tomorrow night at ten PM, and it's gonna be hot as a Dickens. And I've been forwarding some P.U., Public Utilities Commission correspondence to the commission. And other than that, there is, the pipeline discussion tonight, I wanted to discuss that with the board. I typically don't do politics. And that is sponsored by a political party, and what's, what's the board's consensus? Should I go or should I not go? I don't wanna go as, as a Republican if it's sponsored by Republicans, or a Democrat if it's sponsored by the Democrats. So to me, it's a catch-twenty-two. Thoughts?
Think usually when you go to one of those meetings, you're representing the county. I believe most of us are going tonight, so I don't see if you don't feel like it's your place. At least you'll gather the information.
Okay, I'm just being upfront, so. Very good. Obviously, the weather right now, we're still in the drought. We're in a moderate drought, heading, heading to a pretty bad drought if we don't get some moisture here pretty soon. So just be aware of that. Right now, I talked to the fire chief, and he said right now the sheriff is not requesting a burn ban. So we had to play that one by ear. That's gonna be a week-by-week thing. Typically, what happens is the fire, county fire association gets hold of Sheriff Stanwick, and then we come to you and request a burn ban. Right now, we're not requesting that. So, and that's all I have. Any questions?
Just a quick comment on the meeting tonight. It's sponsored by the Republican Women, but it's open to anybody who wants to come. You're not on, yeah, you're not on the program. You're not gonna be asked for your opinion. If you wanna go just to hear the pros and the cons, I don't see a problem with it, even though we may be there also. I guess that it's an open meeting. So.
Okay.
Use your best judgment if you'd like to go. Just obviously, you can't opine.
Will do. Thank you very much.
All right.
All right, Misty?
Good morning.
Morning.
As you can see in my notes, I apologize for not getting this information to you earlier. I was kinda seeing where things lie, and if we could repair the four-wheeler. We had a four-wheeler fire on July third. Thankfully, the driver didn't get hurt. He was smart enough to get off the four-wheeler before it got too big. They got the fire put out. We radioed White Fire Department coming. They got there and they clipped the, excuse me, the power wires to the battery. The thing was starting, trying to start itself. From there, we got the insurance reports, everything done in a timely matter. Took the four-wheeler up to Rollefsen's. They looked at it, gave us a list of what it would cost to fix the four-wheeler. And the insurance adjuster just suggested it's done. It, it needed to be junked. There was just no way to fix it. So in turn, I was in contact with Kelly. Rollefsen told me for two weeks straight, we still have that four-wheeler on the floor for you. We'll work with you. You can come get it. We can pay later, that kinda thing. So September fifth, I put a claim in for the, a twenty-twenty-three Can-Am. I couldn't get a twenty-twenty-two. They said they could not get another twenty-twenty-two. Our next option was the twenty-twenty-three Can-Am Outlander for eight thousand four hundred dollars. Our insurance check will cover everything but one thousand six hundred dollars for that four-wheeler. Just wanted to let you know that. Do you have any questions on the four-wheeler for me? Okay, we have one truck down again, waiting on a water pump. Highway mechanic's working on it. We're patiently waiting for that so I can get out in the truck and help with the county roads, DOT, and townships. Like I just said, we're working on county roads, DOT township for the second run already. And then August thirty-first, I was asked to work at the Weed and Pest booth at the State Fair from ten to four. So I will be doing that. The travel request is in. And other than that, I'm watching my budget close as I possibly can. Any questions for me?
All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, next on the list is finance officers' report. Be it noted items, noted items for the minutes, the auditor's account with the treasurer, payroll and additive totals, highway expenditure report, register of deed statement of fees collected. Letter, letter D, another be it noted item, the BCOAC RSO volunteer. Again, for the minutes, Penny Jensen. We'll move on. Number seven is scheduled agenda items, and we have no scheduled agenda items. We'll move on to eight, regular business. Letter A, action to approve agreement twenty-three dash forty-seven, an application for occupancy of right-of-way in the county highways made by Sioux Valley Energy and Sterling Township. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval. Second.
Discussion, comments?
This is all underground replacement at the North Grove addition.
All right. Any other comments, discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Letter B, action to approve low bid of three hundred and nineteen thousand to Caliber LLC of Lake Norden, South Dakota, for construction of maintenance equipment storage building located in the city of Bruce. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion, comments? Brian?
We received two bids. Three hundred and nineteen thousand from Caliber and one for three hundred and forty-seven thousand nine fifty from Clark Drew of Brookings. I guess, as I mentioned earlier in the report, about the insurance and the FEMA totals that we had received were under those two totals by approximately forty-three thousand nine ninety dollars and seventy-five cents, I guess. Is there any questions that you guys have for myself or Linda with Lilly Design?
I guess what, is there completion date on the project?
December fifteenth.
Are we building right on the footprint?
Yep. We'll be building right over the existing footprint. Our crew has been up there working to expose the water and sewer, and we got that done yesterday, and we're working on the site prep this week. So I guess we'll be ready for them anytime they would like to show up.
Any other comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Jensen.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter C, action to approve a letter of funding commitment for a hazard mitigation grant. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion, comments? Bob, do you have any comments on this?
No, sir. This is the same document they want done yearly. The pre-disaster mitigation plan is updated every five years. First planning district has got the contract on it, and we just need to sign a letter once a year. The last letter was signed August twenty-twenty-two by the previous chairperson. So this is just more of a requirement for the federal grant, sir.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Hostler.
Aye.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter D, action to declare Can-Am Outlander as surplus property disposed of. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Discussion, comments?
Uh, this is the four-wheeler that Weed and Pest Supervisor Misty Moser was talking about in her report. So just a standard practice.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign, motion carries. Letter E, action to allocate up to five hundred thousand dollars of additional funding for the Samara Avenue project using commissioned project funds. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second. Discussion, comments?
Some discussion was had about using some commissioned project funds for Samara Avenue project. We did, we do have five hundred thousand that we had already had previously allocated towards this project. Some of that money has been getting spent on engineering costs with Banner. The project, as it stands right now, is about three point one million. There's the other, if we allocate another five hundred thousand, that's a million from the county towards this project. The city of Volga and a state grant and some partners, a partnership in Volga have all committed additional funding towards this project. So...
All right. Comments and discussion? So basically, we're looking at about a third of, of the cost when it by the county. And this is a county road. It's not gonna be turned over or anything to the city. It's gonna remain a county road. We will be putting together a maintenance agreement, I think, with the city of Volga of snow removal and, and maintenance for stormwater and all of those types of things going on there, too. So, well, that'll be taking place. But it's, I think it's time to move forward on this project. Let's get it done. The main concern has been quite often is the safety of crossing there. With the town growing to the west and their pool and their park there, the way the road sits right now, it's, it's not a very safe place to cross. And so I think this is a good partnership. There's other entities in Volga that have stepped up, that have contributed, which is great to see. And so I, my point is, I think we should move forward with this, and let's get the project done. Any other comments, discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Vanderwall.
Aye.
Bartley.
Aye.
Jensen.
Aye.
Hostler.
Aye.
Krogman.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Letter F, discussion possible action for rural access infrastructure funding. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Well, we have to have discussion first, because there really isn't any, I don't have any specific action noted. So what's happening now is, I had sent out, probably middle of June, I had sent out all of the information to townships regarding funding in two thousand and twenty-four. And I think that spurred some townships to reach out to me regarding And I think that spurred some townships to reach out to me regarding approved funding for 2023. We haven't heard from any townships on any of the projects, um, that were, were, where funds were allocated back in January. Until now recently, I've started to hear from a couple of townships. One of the questions that I am getting is, um, you know, it's an 80, it's an 80/20 cost share, 80% from these rural access infrastructure funds that we've received from the state that the county, county holds and holds in a separate fund are to be used exactly for these types of projects. But what I'm starting to hear from townships now is that they don't have enough funds to, um, cover, cause what we were doing, going to do is reimburse. So they would cover the cost, we would reimburse back the 80%. But what I'm hearing is townships are not having, they don't have the enough funds to pay for the entire project or even pay for culverts to get things started. So I guess I'm kinda looking for some direction to handle that. I've had a request to, you know, from townships that the county would help. Part of these culverts are, uh, you know, provide 80% of the funds to purchase culverts, um, ahead of the projects. My concern is when you, you do this, we wanna make sure that these projects are getting done because that these dollars have to go for these projects. So I don't wanna just, I would rather pay for culverts, pay directly to the vendor to purchase culverts rather than paying a township that 80% and then allowing them to purchase the culverts because there's no guarantee, once we give that township the money, that they're gonna move forward with the project. So, I mean, I would, because it's the grant funding, we have to be kind of careful with how we do that. So I guess I'm just kinda looking for some direction from the board, some discussion on how we would like to proceed if we, because at this point, and I have reached out to all of these townships, but to my understanding, none of these projects have, have started. I haven't seen any reimbursement requests for any of this money for 2023.
Can you remind me of the process?
So townships have to, um, provide a five-year plan. And that's due to us by August 31st. So we're coming up on that deadline here shortly. And again, I've sent out all of this information probably back at the, you know, middle of June to every single township officer, clerk and treasurer in the county. Once we get those five-year plans back at the end of August, um, then off of that five-year plan, townships have to pass the resolution saying they're going to commit 20% of the funding. And they provide applications for each of the culvert projects that they wish, that they want to do in the subsequent year. So we get those applications in, those are due October 31st. So the resolution and the applications are due October 31st. Once we get those, the commission has until January 15th, um, of the following year, so January of 2024, to approve those applications and to dedicate some more of this funding, to these projects. We have to use the rural access infrastructure funds. And as you can see, we have just over a million dollars for these culvert projects. My concern, and I think Brian and I have been saying this all along, you know, just getting this money spent is, is gonna probably prove to be difficult. And if I'm understanding correctly, I think we're getting additional dollars. The state has, did they?
Correct.
So, um, I don't know, are we supposed to get some yet this year even? Do you know when that's supposed to be coming to us?
I know that we had to review our inventories and then I think there was going to be some adjustments made.
Sure.
And then that amount will be determined by the, by the state upon those adjustments.
So all that to be said, we're, you know, we're gonna have some additional dollars coming in. I believe the legislature's appropriated funds for the next two or three years for this project.
Two years.
Two years. So this year and next year. So I don't have an issue with, you know, if these approved projects trickle into 2024, I don't have an issue with that. They're approved, they've gone through the process. I say we, we keep them on the list and they just continue the process. When they can get to them, they can get to them. Cause this money, it's not like it's in our general fund. It's in a specific fund and it has to be used for these purposes. So I don't have an issue with that. I, you know, I've had a, some townships ask, well, our estimates that we gave you last fall in, in October, um, prices obviously changed. I said, that's not an issue, just get us the final bills when they come in. So even this is kind of a, it's a, a very good estimate, but an estimate at this point. But I guess I'm looking for direction on kind of that prepayment process. What, you know, is the board interested in that? To get some of these projects moving forward, I think we probably have to do something. But I guess I'd like to know what that looks like.
Where are the funds sitting right now?
They're in a specific fund, the Rural Access Infrastructure Fund in, that one million is in the county.
It's in the county.
We have it.
Yeah, so if we buy culverts or that kinda stuff, we can take it right out of that fund, just not taking it out of general fund, correct?
Correct, but we'd have to buy the pri, the culverts for a specific projects, uh, project. It's, I don't think the, the county is not, can't use those funds just to go out and buy inventory.
Right, no, I understand that. But we're not using our own general fund money and then asking for reimbursement from the state, correct?
Correct.
So we, we have the money there.
Yes.
So, um, and so the question basically is from the townships is that they were required to pay a hundred percent and then we had to reimburse. And they're saying, okay, we don't, we may not have, you know, the $140,000 if you're talking Midary Township to pay the whole thing. They're saying, if you guys could pay for that upfront, or when do they pay their 20%? This is another question.
So what, so how I envisioned the process was that these projects would take place, they would pay the bills. They'd pay a hundred percent of the bills. Then they would, um, have Brian review the project, submit their bills that they've paid. And then the county, we would cut the township a check for 80% of those costs, reimbursing them 80% of those costs. So they're paying actually a hundred percent is how I envision that upfront. And then they're gonna get reimbursed to 80%. But what I'm hearing is that they don't have enough money in their, uh, general funds now to purchase, even purchase the culverts.
They have cash flow, their other projects are graveling, their maintenance and when their funds are coming available, they, they don't wanna short themselves by paying for the project and waiting for reimbursement.
Right.
I know one township here, they had, I think, four projects they submitted to, which they thought they could handle. They liked to submit it two more, but they, just like Stacy explained, it's, they can't afford to do all of it and, uh, maintain their maintenance that they're doing right now. Brian, correct me if I'm wrong, but this money is for secondary, secondary road system, correct?
Secondary roads in, within all counties throughout the state.
Right, so, um, we could submit projects for this money also on our gravel secondary roads.
Brookings County doesn't have any of our roads listed with the DOT as secondary. All of our county roads are primary. The counties that have unorganized townships are allowed to submit in those unorganized townships only unless their roads are designated as secondary. So that, that's the coverage on that as far as counties being able to apply themselves, uh, if there is unorganized townships within their jurisdiction. By a codified law, they are required to maintain those unorganized townships. And that's when counties would be able to apply for those funds to be able to expense those repairs out on their system.
At our spring meeting, at our workshop, that's, I misunderstood the DOT on that then.
Yep.
Stacy, just a, kind of a quick question. When we look at that reimbursement to the, to the townships, give me, is it 30 days by time, uh, they get the project completed and Brian reviews it, sends the bills to, to us and you pay it, do we have to, we don't, we don't have to have it at a meeting? It's already approved, we just cut the check, right?
No, it gets, it had, the checks only get cut after commission meeting. So it'd have to go through the claims process.
Okay, so basically 30 days, 60?
30 days would be long. I mean, I, it, even if it came in right away, we're probably talking three weeks. I mean, a month would probably be on the high side.
So we're asking to float, the township to float that for 30 days until we can reimburse them?
Yes.
Which isn't, I mean, I can't imagine they can't cover that for 30 days unless they have no funds at all in the bank. Do we have to have it as a paid bill? Can they complete the project and the bills get submitted and Brian approves the bills? The bills then come out, we total it up and give them a check for 80,000 and they pay the rest balance, or does it have to be paid in order to, for us to pay the 80?
I think Brian has to approve the project when he's completed. Correct.
Right.
Right, but the bills won't be in yet.
I mean, they can submit it. I mean, it, do I, am I gonna require, as long as Brian has checked the project and the project is complete, they submit the bills, to me, I'll send it through the process. I'm not gonna ask them for a cashed or a, you know, a check or a copy of a check. But to me, to me, the verification is Brian checking that the project has been done.
So there's a, a time constant there that he needs, they need to get ahold of him right away and he needs to get out and do it, which takes you what, a day?
Not even.
Not even. So it isn't an issue for you to go out and approve these things quickly and get them through the process? So the cash flow is less than 30 days?
Previously, when we did our projects, I mean, I'd be notified that they were starting and I'd be notified when they were complete and I'd have the items back to Stacy to submit for.
Is it possible to do this in a section? In other words, they're gonna have to buy the culvert, the culvert bill comes in, he's approved the project, we pay for the culvert, 80% of the culvert, so to speak. So the bills come after he's completed the whole project, then we, we tally it up and figure out our 80% we owe him? Or do we have townships that don't have the 20%?
I don't think the 20% is the issue.
I think maybe, what, Brian, on these, the cost of the culverts is probably what percentage of the projects?
60 to, 50 to 60%.
Yep. In the timeline, when they order those culverts, those culverts might show up right away and then the culvert company wants to get paid for them right now.
Essentially.
And the project might not get done for two months.
Right.
And then they won't have a bill. So that's why they're suggesting that we get involved with the purchase of the culvert.
So what, what if the bill was submitted to the county then for 80% of the culvert? So that way the township could get the culverts on hand. And then when the contractor has time and weather conditions are conducive, then it can get done. Is that possible that the county could pay for that? So we can get the ball rolling on some of those projects or? I guess, question I have for Lori is accounting purposes here, cause it's a lot easier for them to submit a bill and we just cut a check for them to reimburse. If we were to pay for some stuff, uh, is that gonna be accountable, able to keep track of to make sure what's been paid for and, and what needs to be reimbursed? Because it seems like we're gonna be giving them some money upfront, but not necessarily directly to them. Pay for these culverts, which will turn out to be maybe 50, 60% of the project. They'll finish the project, they'll pay for it. And then we will look at what's remaining of our portion and cut them a check. That's what it seems like the accounting thing is there. Is that something that's gonna mess up?
I've got all of, I mean, the spreadsheet in front of you is how I've been tracking it. Those were the, the costs. You can see the 80/20 split there. So then, once we started paying bills, I was going to start keeping track of those and how much has been paid.
The reason I ask, cause I was thinking of another possible solution would be, um, that when we approve a project, that we would take 50% of it and forward it to the townships. And then so we know exactly what we've given them. They order the, the project, they get the project done, find out what the final cost is. And then we find out we've covered half of it towards our 80%. And the remaining balance, we reimburse them. So it's not, uh, an individual culvert for which spot it was. It's a, it's a chunk. We know, we know exactly what the cost is, the bid came in, it's a hundred thousand bucks. We send them 50,000, they do the project. Helps them with cash flow. It's simple for us on accounting purposes, uh, but it's in their court to get the project done. The only reason I'm saying this now is cause we have the funds. I mean, we're not, we're not trying to cash flow our own funds. We have the funds sitting there. I don't have a problem with it. It's a good idea. The question is, is it allowed under the grant procedure from the state? I mean, they've got all kinds of specific rules. Say the project has to be completed and paid for before you cut them the money out of what they gave us. So that's, I don't know if we have to have Dan review that or somebody review it just to be sure that, uh, the state comes and come back later and say, hey, you couldn't pay for these before they were, were done, that just came out of your pocket. Right, now, the only thing I'm leaning back is, is to our bridge projects. You know, when we first did them, people were having a tough, counties were having a tough time cash flow on that cause they had to pay a hundred. And now the state kinda changed their tune and said, we'll give you some money upfront now to do it. I'm thinking we can kinda do the same thing, you know, kinda. I, I hope we can. I just wanted to know that it's legal with how we got the money and all the strings that the state attaches to these things that come to us. I don't wanna find out a year from now that, uh, all of a sudden, uh, that money you gave them ahead of the project being completed isn't eligible for these funds we gave you. That's, that's the question. If we, we can answer that, then I have no problem doing what you suggest. Just I wanna make sure that we're, we're not violating all the little rules they've got. And then only thing I worry about is making sure they get it done. Yeah. You know, I mean, that's the other thing too. Yeah, we'd have to have some kind of performance agreement if we could do it that way, if the law allows us to, some sort of a performance agreement that we can claw back the funds that it hasn't done in a particular period of time, which involves all kinds of serious stuff, trying to get money back.
If the culverts are ordered, that'd be the start of the project, basically.
Should be, yeah.
It's be on the township to take that upon themselves to order the culvert, to initiate that.
I'm concerned it's gonna fall on us is the project. We're gonna say, hey, well, we just can't get it done. Can you guys do it for us? And now all of a sudden, we're doing the project and they're giving us 20% or something like that. And that's not what the proud thing is supposed to be for. We won't do that.
No, but I'm guessing, say Oakwood's gonna do the project, they're gonna make, put a culvert order in and, uh, supplier will bring all them culverts in a week, you know, to the sites. You'd get a, you'd get a bill at that time if they'd submit that, know the project's under.
So I think the next thing we should probably do is, is check on, see if it's allowed by the state for us to transfer funds upfront for cash flow purposes and see if it, to Commissioner Bartley's point, we don't wanna make a mistake here. And if, and if it's not allowed, do we make a request to say, look, same thing happened to bridges happened to us and the culverts, can we forward some of that money, uh, for cash flow purposes for these? And I think it makes sense, um, especially since the state's done that before. We have justification for reasons why. Yeah. It makes sense, yes. Can't be the only county that has townships with this issue. So maybe there's collective effort to, to make, make, make changes on the state level on how the contract. And I'm thinking 50%, you know, if the culvert projects is 60, we'd pay 50. They have a little bit of money to cover the whole rest of the bill. If it's, if that 50% doesn't cover the whole bill for the culverts, they've got a little money in for the culverts then too.
If it's, if that fifty percent doesn't cover the whole bill for the culverts, they've got a little money in for the culverts then too. What do you guys think?
This is one of them projects that, you know, all the team members need to be on the same page where Stacy's got a nice spreadsheet going in the highway department. But we all need to be aware of what's going on. I think Stacy's done a nice job with this so far, so.
Yep, Lori too, yep. Does that sound okay? Stacy, can you check with that?
Yeah, I can reach out to the state and kind of see what, you know, what rules there are with the, the money and.
So what will we see by our next meeting? Because you said there's a deadline on the thirty-first. Remind me what that deadline is?
That is for townships to get their five-year plans in for funding for twenty twenty-four. So that really doesn't affect what we're doing here.
So we can wait another ma, meeting to make a decision if we need to?
Yeah, we just don't, you know, if there's township that want to still get this work done this year, we don't want to run them short, but I think we'll be fine.
Well, at least the ones that aren't struggling with cash flow probably can still keep doing it. It's the ones that are struggling with cash flow that may need to wait for us to, to decide. But I, I think we need to find, make sure we can do it first.
Yeah, and I did reach out several weeks ago, probably a month ago now, when we, I hadn't been receiving any requests for reimbursement back. You know, so Brian and I are kind of under the understanding that these projects aren't, haven't started, so, um, hopefully, hopefully we'll start seeing them soon.
All right, does that sound okay moving forward? All right, um, next on the agenda is number nine, Commission Department Director's report.
The July general fund surplus, uh, is at, it's as, as June as well, so we're still doing, um, doing good there. Uh, we'll keep an eye on that, especially as we get closer and closer to year end. Um, part of your, in, part of my report was a letter from the Department of Health. And I think we kind of knew at budget time that there were gonna be some changes coming down, uh, with WIC and community health. Um, basically what's happening is, you know, we have our state nurses. Uh, Jen Burns comes to you, you know, a couple times a year and gives her, um, biannual report. Um, they've been dividing their time between both WIC and community health, all these, these nurses across the state. The change is that these nurses now are going to be focusing on one area or the other. They're either going to be a hundred percent WIC or they're gonna be a hundred percent community health. Um, it kind of keeps them, um, allows them to keep in, up with, you know, current best practices and whatnot. Trying to learn, you know, know both sides of those two, um, two things has just, uh, proven difficult. Uh, so that's the change. Um, we do have, kind of where the counties come in is, you know, we do provide them, um, a clerical position. That position's been helping with both areas and as we move forward, um, we'll need some clarification on, you know, what that means for our clerical positions, uh, for that, for that position. So our current WIC contract is actually up for renewal. I'm working with, uh, my contact at Department of Health. Had gotten that contract. There were some changes, cause I was, I was looking at it fairly closely. Um, because of these changes, they had to go back and make some corrections. So that should be coming to you hopefully here at the next meeting, that WIC contract. And then community health, our community health contract actually goes through the end of the year. So on the community health side, we don't really see any changes happening until after, um, the first of the year with that. There is two nurses that we have here in Brookings County, and I do believe one is going to focus on community health and the other on WIC. So I think we'll still have that coverage here in Brookings County. We just got to get some information, you know, kind of some clarification on what that means for our clerical position. So, um, that's kind of what we're looking at, um. You know, as I, as I know more, I'll pass that on. But as of right now, you know, um, I don't really see any major, major changes for us coming down the, coming down the pipe unless there's, you know, future budgeting changes versus how we budget for WIC and how we budget for community health based on that clerical position, so. So I'll kind of keep you, uh, in tune with that as I know more. And again, I think I had in, um, my last me, uh, report to the dates coming up here for department head reviews, um, this Friday. Uh, department heads have to have our self-evaluations turned into Kristin. She's gonna turn those around and get those back out to you, um, by the fifth of September. Um, if not sooner, then, um, she will also be sending you the, the form that you each fill out individually for each appointed department head. You will need to get those back to Kristin by the twenty-seventh of September, and then she compiles those. And then again, October tenth, in the afternoon, we'll be doing, um, department head reviews. And then other than that, just your upcoming dates, tomorrow is the ribbon cutting ceremony. If I do hear anything with a change of site, it's supposed to be at the southeast corner, I believe, out at the interchange tomorrow at ten. Um, due to the extreme heat that we're experiencing, if I do hear any, you know, a venue change or a date change on that, I'll be sure to try to pass that along as soon as I hear anything. Um, Fall Convention is coming up here in September in a few weeks down in Sioux Falls. I think I've got the hotel situation figured out for everybody. And Michelle sent, um, that information out as well. The First District Annual Picnic, um, more information to come, but it is Thursday, September twenty-eighth, if you want to get that on your calendar. Um, otherwise, I think we're kind of out of ways yet. So I think that's all I have, unless you have questions for me.
Any questions? All right, State's Attorney's Office report. Okay, we'll move on to Commissioner reports and discussion.
Okay, on, uh, August ninth, I went to the Brookings County Conservation Tour, very well attended, uh, good information, looking forward to that next year. Uh, that afternoon, Commissioner Bartley and I and, uh, uh, Stacy went to the Tin County Meeting in Flandre. Um, again, good meal and, uh, good information. Uh, on August ten, in the morning, I had a joint powers board and then at eleven-thirty was, uh, invited to the Valero Meeting at Swift, or excuse me, Dakota Bank Event Center. Uh, the seventeenth, uh, I attended the Brookings County DUI Court Commencement Ceremony across the street at the courthouse. And I do plan on attending to educate myself more on the issue with, uh, property rights and CO2 pipeline debate. Thank you.
Commissioner Bartley.
Thank you. On the ninth, also attended the Conservation District Tour. Uh, always find information there that's, uh, all these things that I see I didn't know existed in our county, in particular, some of the conservation things as far as the tillage and the farming, uh, that we got to see with Mr. Hope and, uh, obviously the, uh, the bait, bait building. I didn't know they had all that in that building out there. Pretty interesting, uh, tour. Uh, did attend the Tin County Meeting as, as was mentioned. Uh, the tenth, did, uh, go out, tried to play golf with a few of our friends for CDI's Invitational. I think we ended up, I don't know, uh, seventh or something as a team. It was, uh, good, see a lot of people. On the sixteenth, uh, BDC had a board meeting at, uh, noon and the meeting ran about an hour and a half. A lot of different things were discussed. Uh, nothing new on, on, uh, anything. It was just kind of a rehash of, of things that they've got going on and, you know, things that they're trying to get achieved. Uh, some of it involved the, uh, fishmeal production plant, the types of things that they're selling worldwide now out of that plant. And, uh, a big issue was transportation issue that they brought up. One of the things they'd like to have studies is a, uh, a loading facility somewhere on this side of the state, uh, for railroad loading. We don't have that. Uh, we are going to have an awful lot of, uh, ag-related businesses, ag, uh, production around this area that would be able to take advantage of that type of a loading facility to get our products out to the east coast or the west coast. Right now, it has to move through trains to Omaha or up to Duluth or, uh, other areas. And it's just difficult to get them on cargo ships to export it to different areas of the world that want to buy those products. So there'll be an effort to, to try and, uh, go through the legislative process to see if there's any funding or infrastructure funding available anywhere to, to try and look at that issue to see if there's a way to come up with a, uh, intermodal loading facility. Uh, on the twenty-first, uh, yesterday, we had a building committee meeting for behavioral, Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness. Um, moving right along on that process, our grant application is, uh, being put together right now. We have to have it in by the first of October. Part of that will be some hearings that we'll have here next month. Uh, we've noticed those. We've got them out there for a resolution. Uh, there'll be some questions or comments from the audience at that time to go in as part of that application process on October first. So if you have people that are in favor of our, uh, grant, that want to show up that evening and make their thoughts known, we'd appreciate it. Or morning, I should say, nine o'clock in the morning. I requested that we put that on the agenda at nine in the morning, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman? So everybody knows. Uh, then we had a board meeting last night where we went over all those things again and some of the other, uh, issues, uh, as far as space requirements and needs. And we think we've got a, uh, a lease put together to, to at least get us through the construction process. We'll see if that, uh, lease comes through in the next day or two. And that completes my report.
All right, any questions? All right, Commissioner Jensen.
On the ninth, also attended the Conservation Tour. Like to thank the Conservation District for hosting the event. Also thank BETA for providing, uh, transportation. Conservation, uh, group, um, they invited some other conservation groups from other counties and, uh, they thought it was very interesting. They're taking the, the idea back to their counties and possibly hold some tours within their counties. Uh, on the tenth, also tend, uh, Civil Design and Railroad, uh, Event, uh, good times had by all and, uh, that's about all I had.
All right, Commissioner Hostler.
So on the eight, on the ninth, I also attended the Conservation District Tour. Um, on the tenth, we had the Joint Powers Board Meeting. And then on the sixteenth, uh, also attended the BDC meeting with Commissioner Bartley.
All right, I had a late couple of weeks here. I attended the CDI Golf Event also, um, and that's all I had, so. All right, next on the agenda is number twelve, Executive Session in accordance to South Dakota Codified Law one dash two five dash two, number six and number one, Security and Personnel. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
Don't move.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries.